Everyone. My name is Jeff Marr and it is my pleasure to welcome you to the first of our town hall meetings focused on our work towards the Blueprint for Maryland's Future here in St. Mary's County Public Schools. We are live streaming this evening's event on our website at www.smcps.org/streaming. If you want to share that with your friends and have them tune in, that'd be great. It will also be posted to our YouTube channel and we want to thank our team from the Department of Strategic Initiatives as well as students here at the Dr. James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center for their work in videotaping and streaming this event. Additionally, we just want to make everyone aware that if you have any questions following this evening's event, you can email us at blueprint@smcps.org and it will go to a team that will be able to provide specific responses for you. Now, I'd like to welcome our superintendent, Dr. James Scott Smith, who will open our session. Scott?
A thunderous round of applause. That's fantastic. We are committed to having public conversations as we unpack the actual implementation of this landmark piece of legislation. A lot of conversations have been had, a lot of work has been done, a lot of work has been done in St. Mary's County. And the work that's been done in St. Mary's County is work that builds on the work we were already doing. The one thing that as we read the blueprint and we saw pillar 1, 2, 3, 4, we're like, right on, we're right there. We're committed to early childhood, we're committed to high-quality teachers and leaders, we're committed to college and career readiness, we're committed to resources for student success, and we are certainly, I live right here, between the school system and governance and accountability. We thought that it's most appropriate to start with pillar 1, early childhood education, because we already had such fantastic work going on in St. Mary's County. We already had incredible partners. And really, the blueprint just compels the investment to follow the work. So this evening really is a gathering of subject matter experts, the people who are really doing the work, doing the implementation, and it'll be a great opportunity for people to delve a little deeper into what the blueprint means day-to-day in St. Mary's County. So I thank all of you for attending in person. That is lovely and wonderful. We're going to have a great intimate conversation as we break into smaller groups. And for all those hundreds, if not thousands, of people who are streaming tonight or will be streaming going forward, please pay close attention, please make sure that if you have questions, you're forwarding them to us so that we can get you the answers that you need. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over, I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Marr so that he might give introductions and kind of frame the evening. But before I do, I'd like to say that certainly we can't do our work without fantastic, committed, elected officials, leaders in the community, and we have some of the very best in the back table back there. We have Ms. Mary Washington, board member. We have Ms. Dorothy Andrews, board member. And we have Mr. Jim Davis, board member. Thank you for all coming out this evening to be part of this work. And with that, Dr. Marr, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Smith. Again, I want to welcome everyone this evening and we're going to be turning it over to our early childhood team in the Office of Equity Engagement and Early Access. But before I do, I want to give a little overview about what this evening is, what we're going to be doing through these town halls, and how this evening's sessions are going to be structured. So first of all, a little background for those who are not as familiar with the blueprint. It began with the Kerwin Commission several years ago and legislation that was passed in 2020 by the Maryland General Assembly. Since then, there have been other iterations that have added to and amended the law a little bit to allow us to create our plan. We spent a couple of years developing our first layer of the plan that was submitted in March. It was approved by the state and the AIB, the Accountability and Implementation Board, over the summer, and we've been, of course, as Dr. Smith said, implementing these recommendations, requirements of the blueprint for several years now. We're going to be working this year on part 2 of that plan, which is going to be due in the spring, March of 2024. And so we're having these town halls so we can share information with our community about what's going on and all the elements within the blueprint and each of the pillars, but also to gather input. And if people have questions, if they have other ideas for us to consider as we go through this, we want to hear from folks. And so again, if you're at home watching, if you're in the room, share your questions with us. And again, if you're in the room and you want to hand them to us, we have blue cards on the table, we're going to be having a panel discussion this evening, that if you have questions, write them down on the blue cards, one of our staff members will come around and pick it up so that we can ask our panel members. But also, if you don't have a chance to offer that question in the room, email us at blueprint@smcps.org. We have several reports that are being offered to the community, to the public, and submitted to both the state and the Maryland General Assembly. They fall under each of these five pillars. So the blueprint is structured under five pillars, as Dr. Smith said. Tonight, we're going to be focusing specifically on early childhood, but we'll be holding town hall sessions throughout the year for each one of these pillars. For all the information that we share this evening and all of our reports, all of our documents, our plan, every detail that goes along with it, it is on our website. On the main part of the website, you can click the graphic that says Blueprint for Maryland's Future, or you can go to smcps.org/blueprint and you'll have a whole site that is filled with information as well as other videos from other sessions that we've had. So here's how the sessions are going to be structured. We have a little bit of an overview, so Dr. Hall is going to come up in a few minutes and she's going to share an overview of what's happening within pillar 1, and she'll give some details and information around early childhood education. Those updates and initiatives will be part of that presentation. Then, as I said, we'll have a panel presentation, a panel discussion, and then we're going to break out into some smaller groups. When we break into the smaller groups, for those watching at home, we're going to end the stream at that time because it's going to be more like small intimate discussions. But for the information, it will be archived and then posted to our YouTube channel. After this evening, we have three others that we're going to be looking at. The first, the next one, they are out of order, by the way, but they really kind of follow a chain of thought. So we have early childhood education tonight, then we go into resources to support student success, then as we get to the spring, and particularly as we look, as students start to identify their courses for the following year and start thinking about their courses and planning, we want to share with them what we're doing for college and career readiness. And then we get in the springtime and then we'll be looking at teachers and leaders around pillar 2. So all of those sessions are going to be held in this room at the Forrest Center beginning at 6:00 PM and streamed on our website, so please join us if you will. So with that, I'm going to introduce Dr. Kelly Hall. She's our Chief of Equity Engagement and Early Access, and she leads the work around pillar 1, early childhood education. And she also has several team members that she'll be introducing along the evening as well. Dr. Hall?
So, good evening. We're very happy to have you here. Thank you, Board of Education, for your support. I want to give a big shout-out to our childcare providers that are here tonight. We're happy to have you. Some of our other important partners, Library, the Promise Resource Center, we're just very delighted that you're here. We also have two principals for questions that are going to be here later. We have Dr. Becky Scow, Principal of Lexington Park Elementary, and we have Mr. Scott Surbiak, Principal of Benjamin Banneker Elementary. And then we have two spectacular pre-kindergarten teachers. We have Susan Simons from Oakville, she's here to answer questions, and Charlotte Scott, pre-K teacher from Town Creek. Okay, here we go. So prior to the blueprint, St. Mary's County offered half-day pre-kindergarten class, serving children that were eligible for free and reduced meals first, and then admitting children in rank order and by risk factor until we reached capacity. There were several, just a few, grant-funded full-day pre-kindergarten classes that we had been awarded. Those full-day classes served as our model for our blueprint implementation. So here are some of the requirements of the blueprint. First and foremost, full-day pre-kindergarten for income-eligible 3- and 4-year-old children, students up to 300% of the federal poverty level, and I'm going to show you a chart so you can see exactly what that looks like, in a mixed-delivery system. Mixed-delivery system means the public school and eligible private providers. The blueprint allows for public school systems to prioritize service to 4-year-olds, and that's exactly what we did for the beginning of our implementation. Funding is generated from the state for children that are at or below 300%. And initially, income was the only eligibility criteria. But most recently, students with disabilities and English learners will now generate funding. So you can see the band across the bottom, 185%, that is the threshold for free and reduced meals. Those children are automatically entered into pre-kindergarten whenever they come in. Then up from 186 to 300%, that makes you blueprint-eligible. So if we admit children up to 300%, they may be awarded a space and they will generate funding. And then over time, you see in that far-right pink band, that income threshold will rise to 600% of the federal poverty level. Here's a chart that makes it a little easier. So if you look down the left-hand side, if you go, for example, to a family size of four, you can see the cutoff for 185, that's free and reduced meals. But if you scroll all the way over, 300%, that means a family is eligible for pre-kindergarten service for their 4-year-old if they make $90,000 or less. So some of the other eligibility requirements. The child for the public school system must be 4, honor before September 1st, 2023, for this year. Date of birth between September 2nd, 2018, September 1, 2019. Birth certificate, birth registration, or an unexpired passport will serve as documentation of birth. Proof of residency, and this is for all students in St. Mary's County. We must have a current utility bill, a mortgage or a lease agreement, a real property certificate. And then income-eligible, how do we prove income-eligibility? We can take a 2022 W-2 form, we can take a 1099 form, three consecutive pay stubs, temporary cash assistance, social security insurance, social security benefits, and child support. All factor into how we determine income-eligibility. So, the mixed-delivery system means that service can be provided by the public school and service can be provided by eligible private providers. Now, we don't determine as a school system who's an eligible private provider. We support, we work together, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, but really the decision is on the private provider if they choose to pursue it, and the Maryland State Department of Education determines if they're eligible. But here are the criteria. You can see down on the left-hand side, here are the pieces of the blueprint, what St. Mary's County must follow for pre-K and what the expectation is for private providers. Certified teacher, school system, private provider. Credentialed paraeducator, they need, and a paraeducator in childcare circles is often called a teacher's assistant. They need an associate's degree or a bachelor's degree or a child development associate, and that's like a licensure for, that's often used for teacher's assistants. They need to use an approved curriculum. We do, we use Frog Street Press. Private providers need to use an approved curriculum. They can use the same one that we do to teach Maryland's early childhood standards, but they can pick another one. That would be between them and MSD. Now, it would make sense for us all to use the same. We need to be in session 180 days. Same would apply for our childcares. They need to be XL5 and fully accredited. And that's a process that helps refine practice, fosters a lot of deep reflection on the part of the practitioners, makes sure that certain safety standards are in place for a high-quality program. That is a heavy lift, and that is for our pre-kindergarten classrooms and also for mixed-delivery. You must be an XL5 by a certain period of time. Students up to 300%, same rules apply. Public school, 300%, private providers, 300%. Students who are homeless or have disabilities or are English language learners, eligible for pre-K in St. Mary's County Public Schools, eligible for private provider pre-K. So really, the rules are the same. So here are some ongoing initiatives. In St. Mary's County Public Schools for 4-year-olds, this year, we have 580 full-time spaces with bus transportation in most circumstances. Professional development is planned for our pre-kindergarten staff and our private providers throughout the year. And I just will talk a little bit more about it. They're our partners. Whether they choose to participate in the blueprint, we still invite them, we welcome them to partner with us in our professional development as well as our parent-family engagement, because we're all on the same side here, and it's the right side for the children that we collectively serve. We have parent-family engagement workshops, and they're implemented throughout the year. We have conscious discipline workshops that are going to begin in January, and they are our childcare families as well as our public school families, grandparents, anybody's welcome to attend. All right, what does pre-K look like in the public school system? Here are our rules. 20 students per class, that's the class cap, one certified teacher. In the public school, we put in two paraeducators. And that helps make sure that our children get the attention and the time that they need. It also helps us honor our negotiated agreement, so teachers get the planning time they need, paraeducators get a lunchtime that's free from distraction, and they get periodic breaks. Full day, six-and-a-half-hour days, just like our other students, with developmentally appropriate activities. So they have foundational language and literacy, they have foundational mathematics, they have social foundations, and think about that as learning to get along, learning to wait your turn, walking in a line, school behaviors that will help foster a successful school experience throughout the years, physical and motor development. And built into every single day, in addition to breakfast and lunch, they have snacks and they have a lunch period, and they also take a nap. They have a rest period, and that tends to dwindle over the course of the year. Right now, it's running 45 minutes, maybe even an hour at the very beginning of the school year, but as they grow and develop, that gets down to about 30 minutes. And then we have ongoing parent and family engagement workshop and activities. So, our professional development for private providers. Right now, we don't have any eligible private providers as deemed by MSD, and that's okay. We're working towards it, but we do share professional development. We share our family engagement, and we tailor our professional development in some circumstances based on our needs assessment and evaluation to better serve the needs of our childcare providers. Here are some examples of some of the professional development that we've recently put in place for our private providers. Last year, we've always invited them, and we were often doing that during the course of the day. We would get substitutes for our teachers and we would invite our private providers. But really, we have such a good and transparent relationship, we were able to say, you know, what's making it hard for you to come? And here's the reality. Often, we struggle to get substitutes. They're watching and caring for children during the course of the day. So we said, okay, what if we flipped it to evening? What if we did that? How would that help? We had a wonderful training last night. Many of these people were there last night for Foundational Science of Reading. We ran it from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Board of Education office, and we had great attendance last night. We have another one on November 28th, which is Foundational Mathematics. And then in December, by popular request, we're going to do Grant Writing 101, because part of the application process for MSD is to write a grant. And as somebody that writes a lot of grants, the first few times, it can feel very overwhelming. So we're going to support folks that are interested in pursuing that, we're going to support them through the process. Now, these are some real pictures of pre-kindergarten, and some of them were from the end of last year, some are from this year, but it gives you sort of a snapshot of what a day in pre-K looks like. So you can see, there's independent work, there's group work, there's outside recess, there is the big thrill of going on the school bus and going home, we're back to childcare. There are healthy meals, there's arts and crafts, my personal favorite, the picture of the kids taking a nap and holding hands, and, you know, lots of creative, developmentally appropriate centers and the opportunity to create. Okay, so for pillar 1, next steps, where do we go from here? We're going to continue to expand, and the public school system is going to continue to expand with 4-year-olds. And we're hopeful that over time, our private providers will take the 3s. And really, that's been a very conscious decision. We feel as a school system, we have a good handle on 4-year-olds. They can come on a bus, you know, we have a handle on that. But when we look at developmental needs, and I think I speak for our childcare, because we've talked about this before, we really believe that 3-year-olds, their needs can be better met in a high-quality childcare setting, and I think we're all in agreement with this. We're going to continue working to get our programs fully accredited. I will tell you, all of our elementary schools are already in and working towards the XL accreditation process, and they will make the timeline. Certified teachers, Dr. Smith always says, we're always looking. Right now, we have certified teachers in our pre-K programs, we have credentialed paraeducators in our pre-K programs, we'll continue to look for them. And over time, that income threshold is going to increase to 600%, which also will help the expansion. So, we are now going to ask some questions with a panel and some people in my department that have aspects of pillar 1 where they are the resident expert. They're going to come up, and then we're going to ask some questions, and then we're going to take some questions for you. So first, I would like to ask Mrs. Charlotte Swidley, our Director of Parent and Family Engagement, to please join the panel. And her area of expertise is eligibility, enrollment, and parent-family engagement. Next, I'd like to invite Wendy Binkley. She is the Coordinator of our Judy Center Early Learning Hubs. We have three in St. Mary's County. And her area of expertise is working with private providers, the mixed-delivery system, and also parent and family engagement. And then, I would like to welcome Lynn Treherne, who is a Master Career Teacher. She is our Early Childhood Instructional Resource Teacher and Coach, and she's here to answer questions about academics, curriculum, and parent-family engagement. Are we ready? So I'm going to start us off and just ask some questions that maybe you want to know but aren't quite sure. So the first one's going to be for Mrs. Woodley. All right, Mrs. Woodley. Exactly what does a parent need to present in order to verify their income?
So, thank you. To verify income, as we know, the blueprint looks at that first. So one of the screening tools that we use is a family can provide their W-2 forms to show their annual income. They can have three pay stubs that are in consecutive order so that we can do an average and then we transfer that over to what their yearly income would be. They can use, if they have any type of, what do I want to say, childcare support or alimony that they receive of where they're maybe in a co-parenting situation to where both parents are still contributing to their child's education. We also have some families who may receive benefits through TCA, which is called Temporary Cash Assistance, or SNAP. Some people may still refer to it as food support, food welfare there. And then, there could be a combination of any of those. So our families all look a little bit different, so if it's a single parent, then they may have one or two of those documents, that would suffice. If it's a two-family situation and maybe a father and a mother are not living in the same household, but again, they're contributing to their child's education, then we would combine that. So those are some of the documents we can use. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next question, ready? All right, Mrs. Binkley, how long does it take from start to finish to make it through the XL process and become fully accredited?
Typically, that process takes about two years, give or take. It can take a little bit longer, but once you start the accreditation process, you have 24 months, so that's your two-year timeline. You can wait about 60 days beforehand as you're going through the orientation process to begin, but typically, two years.
Okay. And, Mrs. Treherne, would you walk us through a typical pre-kindergarten schedule?
Well, every day is different in different schools. I will start with that, because we have some schools that are early arrival schools like Carver and Greenmuen Knowles, and then we have other schools that start later in the day. But a typical day starts with breakfast, and then they typically move into a whole-group morning meeting kind of arrangement where they share a morning message, they might do what's called a Brain Smart Start, which is part of our conscious discipline that we use in order for the students to connect with one another. They do some whole-group language and literacy together, and then they might work in small groups to support some of those early language and literacy skills. They also have, and those small groups would be differentiated according to the students' needs. And then, they all have lunch, and we also have mathematics. And again, more small-group time to differentiate for their needs in mathematics. We have science, and we have a lot of centers in our pre-K classrooms that are developmentally appropriate for our 4-year-olds. And those centers range from academic centers to developmental centers. For example, we might have a writing center that's more academically-based, and then our developmental centers would be more like dramatic play where they're using their imagination, they might connect something that they are doing in their Frog Street theme, they might set up a restaurant in the dramatic play center where they're writing down orders and looking at menus and doing some reading. And... And they do take a rest period in the afternoon. And then, there are a lot of other components of conscious discipline that are woven into our day. For example, they make a commitment in the morning, and then they come back together at the end of the day, and they revisit that commitment, whether they had an oops or a thumbs up.
Okay, thank you. So we have two questions from our audience, and I'm going to go ahead and answer these questions. So the first one is, can you explain what conscious discipline? Absolutely. It is a social foundations program. It is, it's been ranked by Harvard as one of the top in the country. But it's all evidence-based, science-based, and it's built into the Frog Street curriculum. And really, what it focuses on is the adult learns to control themselves and manage their own emotions to help children learn to manage their emotions. It never backs off on a consequence. So if a child is throwing a toy, you're not going to play with the toy. You know? It helps to understand when Mrs. Treherne talked about, they make a commitment. Very often in pre-K, that commitment is going to be, I'm going to walk in the line today, and I'm not going to touch the walls when I walk down the hallway. Or, I am going to make a commitment to wait my turn and not take classroom materials. The rules of social skill that will help throughout. And when there's a consequence, the teacher never, or the paraeducator, never adjusts that consequence. If you have to remove yourself from the group for a little while, that's okay. But having a tantrum isn't going to change that. So, I see some of our childcare providers nodding their head, they've joined us. It works. Our teachers have said, this has made a huge difference in the children's ability. They learn the rules, they follow the rules, they control themselves. And the teachers are developing strategies to deal with that. So they don't feel like, you know, so-and-so's going to have a tantrum. And over the course of the year, what we see is our four-year-olds are becoming more independent. So then, the second question is related. What kinds of activities do you schedule for parent-family engagement? So, we often have conscious discipline workshops because parents have loved it. And they've asked if they can, if we can have more, and we do evaluations all the time, so we can say, what do you want to know about? Hot topic for our parent-family engagement, dealing with bedtime battles. And how do they work through that at home? And so, that's tailored specifically for them. We also do foundational academics. We've had opportunities for parents, foundational science of reading that we've just done for our new teachers, new to pre-K teachers, we've done for our childcare providers, that's coming for parents. We've done ways that you can incorporate play and language development into your mealtimes. And again, lots of requests for conscious discipline to help for the struggles, taking your child to Walmart, they're having a temper tantrum, they want a toy, how do we cope? I have another question coming. Okay. So, can private providers have or take children before the two-year mark of accreditation? Yes. There is a window for that. But remember, any decision for a private provider to be eligible for blueprint funding has to come from MSD. But our public school programs are in the process, we're accepting children. So I think the same logic would apply if private providers are enrolled and have a purposeful plan to meet the standard in the appropriate timeframe. That's a good question. Okay, any other? Here comes another one. You guys are keeping me busy. Okay. I have to put my glasses on for this. Will the program possibly hurt private daycare providers who do not wish to participate? That's a good question, and that's been asked across the state. We in St. Mary's County don't have enough childcare providers. So, I don't believe it will. I think if you talk with these folks here, they're going to tell you, they have a full caseload of students, if you will, and a waiting list. So I don't see that happening. You also will hear about tension in some other districts. And we've been asked this question, like, do we have tension, like, public school, hey, you're taking the kids from the childcare, or vice versa? We really have not. But again, we see ourselves as partners. And what we really want is for our private providers to serve three-year-olds, our public school pre-Ks to serve four-year-olds, and then work together so that that's a seamless transition. And then at the end of pre-K, we're going to seamlessly transition them into kindergarten. All right. Do early childhood education students perform at a higher academic level when entering elementary school versus, I'm having a hard time reading some penmanship, versus mainstream students? So, there is a great body of research that says the first five years of life are most significant in terms of brain development. So there is a body of research that said absolutely high-quality care, whether that's at home, in a home daycare, with a grandma, in an early childhood program in a school setting, that is going to increase the likelihood of future academic achievement. It's going to help with language development, which is the precursor to reading, precursor to math, there's lots of math vocabulary. So, yes, there's a body of research that says high-quality early experiences are going to provide better student outcomes for students. Okay. So I don't see any more blue cards coming. Oh, here comes one more. I have to put my glasses on again. Are there MSD guidelines or restrictions concerning accepting pre-K children and also operating a regular childcare program, specifically mixing multiple age groups? That's a complex question. I think you, the person who asked it, the absolute right answer would be to go to MSD. But yes, I believe that that can happen with some conditions of, does the blueprint-eligible child in the daycare get the 180 days for six-and-a-half hours? Does the childcare have the staff to guarantee that while they serve the other children that are in their care? So I do believe it can be done. Okay. So, Dr. Mar is going to come up and escort, direct people to various tables, and we're going to follow the same process. We'll have an enrollment eligibility table, we'll have an academic table, we'll have a childcare-mixed-delivery table, and we'll have general topics. So each of my colleagues will take a table. We're also going to have our two principals sort of circulate around if anyone wants to talk to them, and our two pre-K teachers, and thank you so much for being here, will be here as well. So, Dr. Mar, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Let's give Dr. Hall and the panelists a wonderful round of applause. As Dr. Hall mentioned, we're going to have four breakout groups for just some smaller table discussions for those in the room. For those watching at home, we're going to be ending our live stream now, and we thank you for watching. For those who didn't catch the whole thing, you can watch it on our YouTube channel. So thank you to those at home for watching. So for those in